Good evening. Welcome to the Lompoke City Council meeting. Prior to this, we had a closed session to discuss some items. We had no reportable action in that. And now for our invocation, Pastor Bernie Fetterman. Please rise.
Dear God, you are a refuge and our very present help in trouble. You never leave us in our difficulties, and you long to share your love and wisdom with us. You never called us to live our lives apart from you, but that with you and through you, our lives could be all that you designed for them to be. When we trust in ourselves, remind us you alone are wise. When we trust in our strength, remind us you alone are all-powerful. You have determined to give us strength and courage. So, God, help us to put our trust and our hope in you. This night, as our mayor and council discuss the business of our community, we ask you to be with them, to help their minds to have clarity, their words to be seasoned with grace, and their ears open to understanding. Give them the faith and the courage together to seek your inspired plan, and finding it, to propose it, knowing that when it's inspired by you, you will open the way for it through all obstacles. Bless and prosper our city, our city administrator, the staff and employees of this city, and all our citizens. And we do not selfishly pray for ourselves, but our county, our state, our nation, as well as our world. For our city, we pray that darkness and lawlessness will be exposed, and that value may be added. Heartache and despair receive hope, and may all that is good, godly, and wholesome thrive. Protect and watch over those who protect and watch over us, our police and fire departments, our military, and those who serve our infirm and needy. Remind us to be thankful for all the blessings and benefits we've received, for all good things come from you. Whatever our situation this night, do not allow our trust in you to fail, for you have made us and will preserve us. For this and all your blessings, we are grateful. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, could you call me tomorrow, please? Thank you. City Administrator, report, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, while there are no status updates to report tonight, I would bring to your attention that the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors met today, and their agenda included the consideration of the request for a proposal to provide the county fire protection services to the city of Lompoke. The board authorized the middle of the county's proposal to the city with the requirement that there are no additional costs to the county. So according to the agenda report, the proposed total estimated cost of service to the city is now approximately 4.3 million. And additionally, the costs include the fire district's cost share of 672,000, which increases the city's initial total proposal cost to approximately 5 million to consolidate with the county for fire services. This amount is approximately $2 million above what we currently budget for the city's fire services. And the Board of Supervisors also specify that the county staff not spend a great deal of time negotiating, because the county currently has fiscal budget gaps, and that would not enable costs to be transferred to the fire district, excuse me, or the county. So considering this, I would recommend that staff return to council at a future meeting date to get council's direction, considering the proposal is now cost prohibitive.
I'm certainly in favor of that. Rest of the council in favor of receiving a staff report back at the next meeting if possible, and the meeting after if not? Okay. Lots of nods. I don't think I can tell it with a straight face. Could you tell the public about our new problems with acquiring the gopher? I forget the name of the man. The Verminator, yes, and why we're now stuck in the mud on that, compliments of the state of California?
I think I'm going to defer to the city attorney to report on the penal code that impacts that.
There is a penal code section, I think it's 697-U, that prohibits the use of carbon monoxide to kill vertebrate animals. And that's what this system was that was, had been suggested. There is a bill that was introduced, I think in February, to create an exception for certain vertebrate animals, that that kind of activity could be used on, that kind of a equipment could be used on, but it's only been introduced, and it hasn't gone anywhere, so I'm not sure where it will go. But as of today, that system is not a system that could legally be used. And actually, the inventor of it let Dan McCaffrey know that upfront, so that's how we found that out.
Only in California.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You may want to, some of the public may not be even aware what we're talking about. You may want to just explain what we're talking about here.
Okay. We have a gopher problem in our parks, particularly River Park and River Bend Park. And members of the Parks and Rec Commission went through some great level of searching to find a way to eradicate the gophers, and poisons were looked at, but new state laws made it impossible to use the poison that we manufacture in Lompoke that actually works. We could instead use the poison that's manufactured in Lompoke that they have to eat a lot of it. And then other things were looked at, and finally, we settled on the Verminator, which is a, basically, a gasoline air compressor, and the air compressor compresses the exhaust gas from the gasoline engine, and it pumps it down the gopher holes, and they go to sleep and never wake up. And we, as a council, had agreed that this would be a good thing, and the city administrator found some money in the current year budget, and we went off happily to buy it, and then we got some help from the state. So now we're back to square one, looking for alternate solutions to our gopher problem, so people will quit fracturing legs and spraining ankles and things like that. I have two things I want to share on the, do we have any other staff requests and announcements?
No.
On council development agency requests and announcements. First, I'd like to say that we made Westways. I don't think so. Anyway, we, Lompoke made the current edition of Westways, which is the March-April one. So if you have it at home and you haven't cracked it open yet, which I had not, someone pointed it out to me, this is truly amazing, and we had a great picture in there from our aquatic center. Number two, if I could have the slide. This cartoon appeared in the Lompoke record, and I think there must be some misunderstanding about this center, and, as we all know, I was vocal about the floor plan at some point in the past, and, but that ship has long since left the dock, and so I think there must be some confusion, because as we recall from last council meeting, we're on budget, on time. No problems have been found that cost any more money in the disassembly process of the building, and the building is in fact in the reassembly process, so my thought is somebody just didn't know the current facts. And I just wanted to set it straight and say, no, that's not the problem. So far, life is all good and looks good in the future with regard to the community center. I, I don't know, was it you? Oh, I don't know. And that's all I have at the front end of the meeting. And now we have an opportunity for oral communication for those of you who are out there and would like to come and talk about any subject.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and members of the community, I'd like to publicize a boxing event that we're having this weekend, Saturday, starting at 1800, 6:00, at Roy's Boxing Academy. We're going to be hosting an amateur boxing tournament. We'll have people from Ventura and the surrounding area. And we really need your support. We need the community's support financially and otherwise. We know that boxing, amateur boxing, is a very effective crime prevention program, so therefore, we really need your help with this, and we would appreciate each and every one of you showing up and buying a ticket and supporting us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoke. I wanted to talk about the workshop you just had. I attended, and I was rather disappointed. I was here for about two and a half hours, and there was no opportunity for the public to address the council during the workshop. I know at the very beginning, you had public input, and at the very end, but throughout the whole entire workshop, you didn't open it to the public at all. And so I would just like to point out that I think a workshop is best when there's interaction between the community and the council, and that's when you can best develop and look at different ideas, and I would really encourage you to encourage the public to take part in that. One thing I found in the past that works is that instead of the council being up at the dais, if they sit on the floor and the table, it just seems more like we're all in it together, working on some of these issues, because it didn't feel very inclusive the other night. But twice, there was public comment, the mayor called up two different people to address two different issues that came up. One was the racetrack, and the other was the BMX park. Now, I'm from an old racing family. My husband has raced cars for years, so, you know, racing is cool, but in both cases, you authorized both of these groups to work with city staff. And a number of times, you made the comment that this would be no cost to the city, but in fact, city staff time is a cost to the city, so it's not free. And the other issue I had, and I thought about this when I got home, these two groups obviously knew members of the council, had, you know, talked to some of you, had worked some of this stuff out, but there are a lot of nonprofits in the community that could certainly benefit from city staff time. And so I would think that if we're going to allow some nonprofits to be able to utilize city staff time, then that should be something that's open to other nonprofits to utilize as well. And that goes the same with the property. In both cases, the property that these groups are looking at is city property, and I was thinking, you know, there might be a lot of different organizations out there that have great ideas, and if they knew that there was city property available, they may, you know, then come forward. So I would just encourage you to make sure that the public understands that city staff time is available to them as well as city property, so that we can have some of the best ideas and the best programs coming forward. And that seems a mature process. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And from my position as mayor, if someone in a nonprofit group has an idea that they would like to bring forward, absolutely come to me, you know, call the number at City Hall, set up an appointment, come in. I have a map in my office that shows all the city property and what's available, and, you know, I'm certainly open to anyone that has a suggestion. I appreciate your other suggestions. I was not as dutiful as normal about asking for public comment on each item. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment, and we'll move to the consent calendar. There are no minutes on the consent calendar this time. We will have them next meeting, because the budget has been somewhat all-consuming in the near term. And if there are not any questions, I would entertain a motion. Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar, which is only one item, and its approval of expenditures.
I'll second it.
Okay, the consent calendar has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor, is this one of those you need to add, one of those that if there's any problem on, or anything regarding your property?
Yeah, I could say it, but I read through it and didn't see it, so. That notwithstanding, if there's anything on there that does affect me, I abstain from it, but I did look at it this time in detail. And if we go ahead and vote, please. And that passes four in favor and one absent. Are there any written communications? No? Okay. Yeah. It's after, I'm sorry, it's on the next page. Are there any other persons who would like to speak during the final oral communication section and talk about any subject? And Housing Authority head guy, forgot your name, sorry. If you can wait a couple of minutes, I need to talk to you after, since you're here. Fred, I'm sorry, Fred. Just you and me after when we get done. There's something I need to share with you from that meeting in Galena, and it'll save me calling you in tomorrow. Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications, and we'll go to council redevelopment agency requests and announcements, and, I'm sorry, I don't know who's first. Ladies first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to announce that I went to the annual, no, monthly NCPA meeting in Sacramento. Commissioner Lingle had asked me to go in his absence, and I attended. I will be coming back, I actually, I guess the utilities will be coming back with an issue that was discussed at that meeting that we already voted on, but it will need a final approval from the council, and I believe that that's going to be on our next agenda, and we'll discuss it then. Pliny, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, council request. I have down in my long-term binder that our street impact fee waiver is going to expire on 31 March, and I think maybe we should bring it up at a future meeting if we wish to continue to extend that as an incentive. Street impact fees, it expires on 31 March, and so I think that we should bring that up maybe in next meeting and talk about that, if we want to extend that incentive or not. I'd also like to go ahead and say goodbye to an old friend of mine, Kyle Dodds. He left Lompoke City Fire Department and went to Santa Maria, and, well, bye, Kyle. And that's all I had right now.
Councilmember Starbuck, is that request in the form of a staff report?
Well, how was it last time? We decided to waive an impact fee?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that it will have to come to a council discussion. We will have to vote on approving the extension.
Okay, so the question before us is, do we wish to have that agendized for the next council meeting, which would be the last opportunity before it expired?
I'd like to second his motion.
Okay.
I would like to approve it, but I would like to amend it, that I would actually like to now, really, did it work? What was the impact? Did we actually have some businesses that came into town? And really, on the flip side, how much money did we lose? Okay, so I would like to have, and I don't know if it can happen by the next agenda item, but I would like to get actually some report on what was the outcome for having it for the last year? Well, I believe, whatever it is, I would like to know.
Would your request be for numbers in a less than absolutely precise sense, so it would be a little easier to do? Is that adequate?
Well, numbers that are within 10% or something. I mean, I think that would be easy enough to get.
Because there may be some very small projects, and those might be time-consuming. Okay.
Is that possible for the next agenda, to gather that information or not? If not, you know, I would say we can put it to the agenda after that.
I think it would be best to say next agenda after the 15th. We do have a short turnaround time for gathering those numbers, and, you know, Brad Wilkie will be looking at that on top of a lot of other projects that he's working on.
City Administrator, for your knowledge, are there any projects that would be impacted by, it would only be a matter of a week, I can't imagine that would impact anything, would it?
I'm sorry.
Are there any projects that might be impacted by that time gap? I'm not familiar with any.
No.
Okay. All right. Is everybody satisfied with that? Be the first meeting in April? Councilmember Martner, is that good for you, first meeting in April?
Yeah, that will be fine.
Okay. Who's next?
You only invited on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that on Wednesday, February 16th, I attended a meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building, the commission to refurbish that building. We all attended a workshop here on the 22nd. And then I'd also like to thank the community for this past weekend. Community, as usual, turned out in force to support our local firefighters at the Fire and Ice Ball held at the Elks Club. It was a large turnout, and I'm hopeful that the, hopeful that the Firefighters Foundation raised a good sum of money for the firefighters. And I'd also like to thank the community for turning out again in force the following day, Sunday, the 27th, for the Rotary Wine Tasting held at the Veterans Memorial Building. And that project is to, all proceeds are going to help refurbish the press box at Hokes Stadium. So again, community turns out and supports all these great community projects. So again, I want to thank you.
And I'd like to report that both council member, council member Martner, Lingle, and I attended the Fire and Ice Ball, but we did sit separately, so we didn't have a conflict of interest. I would report that on the 23rd, I attended a seminar in Santa Maria sponsored by Laney Hunter, longtime realtor, and Loris College, to talk about economic development in the North County, and received a presentation that I thought was outstanding, and they're going to try to organize that and bring it forward. I attended a meeting on the 24th at City Hall with the YMCA, as a preliminary discussion to, on council's direction for them to bring back a proposal with regard to the city pool. I was honored on Friday morning, and we all were as a council and as a community, the Union Pacific Railroad, who has now left us, called up and wanted myself to come and represent the council, and Paul Patel, the hotel owner, who had, just what they wanted to say to all of us and all of the city was that they have never felt so welcome anywhere before, and not just for what the city did for them, but for what the whole community did for them. And his exact words was, "We will judge all other communities by Lompoke in the future." And Paul went out of his way and helped them find accommodations at their next stop, which I think is King City, so they, they couldn't say enough good things about it, and they will be sending us a copy of their company newsletter in which we will be featured. And Friday, as the gentleman from the Housing Authority alluded to, there was a press conference in Galena sponsored by the city of Galena and the South Coast Mayors, and we were invited to it, and also the mayor of the city of Buellton went, and the subject of this press conference was to urge the state not to dissolve the redevelopment agencies and take away our source of doing things like helping the Housing Authority. There was a very large turnout, both with regard to council members and mayors, and also a lot of folks from the community housing industry came there, and I think the point was well-made to everyone. There was a little briefing after at the Galena City Hall, and I'd like to report, I got a free half a sandwich. And we had a briefing from Dave Mullenex, who is the League of Cities representative, and he was talking about the process in Sacramento. I did receive a call from him today, and the council for the assembly pointed out to the joint committee that it was probably a violation of Prop 22 to dissolve the redevelopment agencies, and it seemed like they might be paying attention that they, to that, contrary to prior times when they just went ahead and violated the law anyway. And then a really fun thing happened. I opened girls' softball season on behalf of the council at the Boys and Girls Club, and that charged me up for two more weeks, so I'm good, I'm good now for, I've got two more weeks worth of fire. And the last thing was, no, that was it. So there's my little bit of reportable itinerary for the week. Anything else, any other council members? Okay. Seeing none, we will be adjourned to March 15th at 7:00 PM. Thank you for coming. Hit it. Okay, the next will be a public hearing for an application for a certificate of convenience and necessity and taxicab owner's permit. And before we begin that, I would like our city attorney to give us a little explanation, which he has previously given to me, but I want everybody else to understand what our, what decision we're making here.
Thank you, Mayor. Your municipal code requires a, what's called a certificate of convenience and necessity for a taxicab operator to be able to operate in the city, and the council is the body that's directed to make the finding on whether or not that exists, that convenience and necessity obligate, or requirement exists. And the things that you would consider in making that decision are actually found in the code themselves, too. And you would consider the reports that you have in front of you as one of the bits of information. You'd consider the number of taxicabs and the taxicab services that are already in the operation, whether the existing taxicab service is adequate to meet the public need, and whether adding more taxicabs would be a negative impact on that service that's provided, and whether or not there's the character and experience and responsibility of the applicant is some that you would feel comfortable with determining would be of a convenience and necessity. So that, that's the obligation that you have under the code, and the staff report that the city minister will be giving will let you know what the information is that staff is providing.
And unlike a liquor license, this is convenience and necessity rather than or, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. City Administrator?
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, the report before you was initially scheduled for the hearing at the regular council meeting of February 1st. However, the applicant, Mr. Mendy of 805 Taxicab Mendy International Corp., requested a continuance of the hearing, so to tonight's meeting, and council honored that request, and thus, staff is before you tonight to report that Mr. Mendy submitted an application for a certificate of convenience and necessity and taxicab owner's permit to allow him to provide taxi services in Lompoke. In accordance with the Lompoke Municipal Code, Chapter 5.36, as the city attorney indicated, Mr. Mendy is required to apply for council's approval of a taxicab owner's permit and a certificate of convenience and necessity. Background investigation was completed by the police chief, as well as a verification of insurance coverage completed by the city attorney. Taxi service in Lompoke is currently provided by two taxicab companies, Lompoke Taxi since May 1997, and Promenade Cab Company since March 1997. Taxi since May 1997 and Promenade Cab Company since March of 2010. The Police Department memorandum attached to staff's report concludes that Mr. Mendy's application fails to adequately support a public convenience and necessity for a third taxicab service in Lompoke. And council must determine tonight whether a public convenience and necessity for a third taxicab service is required. And staff recommends council conduct a, uh, council conduct a public hearing and receive oral testimony, determine if the public convenience and necessity is required or not, uh, to operate the passenger transportation of 805 Taxicab Mendy International Corporation. And if the applicant is fit, willing, and able to provide the taxi services, and if the determination and recommendation to is affirmative, then direct city staff to issue a taxicab owner's permit to Mr. Mendy, DBA 805 Taxicab Mendy International Corporation. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? I noticed on the police report originally issued that the vehicle that was originally going to be used was not currently licensed. Is there an amendment to that or have we not changed the report because it was discontinued? I would think we probably-
There has not been an amendment, so, um, I'm not aware that anything in the, um, police memorandum has been changed.
Okay. Any other questions from council at this time? Okay, is Mr. Mendy here? No? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could we just make sure that the record reflects that the applicant didn't appear tonight?
And Mr. Mendy did not respond to being asked to come forward and did not appear. Okay, who else would like to testify on this subject this evening? Okay, we'll close that and come back to the council for discussion. Who would like to speak on this subject first? Councilmember Lingle.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I mean, after reading the report and after, um, looking, looking at the report, reading it, the applicant is not here. I mean, I really don't see what there's to discuss other than for us to, I mean, if, if so desired, I'd like to make a motion that we deny, deny his request for a permit based on, um, necessity and convenience.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'm going to go ahead and second that based upon what's here on the staff report.
Okay. And is there some discussion from the council members? Councilmember Martner?
Um, does anybody on the staff have, um, some kind of statistics or facts that say to the respect that an average wait time for a taxi in the City of Lompoke is 10 to 15 minutes? Does anybody know that? It's in the staff report here that Mr. Mendy claims that that's the case. So I'd like to know whether either the Police Department or the staff made some, you know, some collaborative effort to figure that out. Did we call the present taxi companies that we have here? Did we ask them what the average wait is? Nobody did that homework?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, the responsibility of providing the evidence of whether or not there's convenience or necessity is really on the applicant. And so all the applicant has done is provided anecdotal information. So the Police Department has indicated that because it's only been anecdotal information, that's why the Police Department is suggesting, is recommending that it not be approved.
Okay. So basically, we're not obligated to do due diligence and find out whether there is a, or the Police Department, which is in charge of making the recommendation, we're not obligated to do due diligence to say, um, whether there is a necessity or not. Just like to know the facts.
I, I don't know if I would use the term due diligence, but the, the city, the city is not obligated to provide the evidence to support a finding of convenience and necessity.
Okay. So we are not obligated to support a finding. Are we obligated to say not, to deny?
Yes.
Okay. So this is an official denial.
If you can't make the finding, then you need to deny it and that's what the motion was.
I see. Okay, so that's the process.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other comment from the council? Questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none, we can move to a vote, please. Okay, so the, uh, in this case, the red button would be not to provide the-
The motion was to deny, to determine there isn't a convenience and necessity.
Okay, so back up and I gotta cancel it and let's try again. No, I'm still confused.
It's like one of those propositions that if you don't want the proposition, you want a yes.
Mr. Mayor, my motion is to deny the request for a license.
Because of a lack of convenience and necessity.
Correct.
Yes.
My second was based upon staff's report to second it.
Okay. I'm, I'm now good with that.
Because there was insufficient evidence, it's clear that you can make a determination that there is no convenience and necessity that's been proven to you.
Okay, so, green would mean we approve the motion. And the ma, motion passes 4-0 with 1 absent. Our next item will be the City of Lompoke 2010 General Plan Annual Report Progress Status of Implementing General... Okay, well, that's what's in this section. I looked at my book and it's in the wrong section. I stand corrected and it would be the Housing Element Status Report by our Planning Division Manager, Lucille Breeze.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I stand before you this evening with good news. The State Housing and Community Development Department has certified the City of Lompoke Housing Element. This element was adopted by council October 19th of 2010. And what we're doing this evening is requesting that you accept the correspondence, receive the correspondence, and close the public hearing. We left the public hearing open in October, uh, in case we received any correspondence from the state that would necessitate the council taking action this evening to change any element of the, uh, housing element. However, that was not necessary and so we would recommend that you do close the public hearing and, uh, we will have a certified element. Thank you. That completes my staff report and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from the council at this time? Okay. And now we would open this for a public hearing, continued from the prior date. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this subject? Seeing no one rise, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for discussion. Who would like to have the first bit of discussion?
They're talking tonight.
I think, I think we should force council, councilmember Starbuck to speak first.
Yes, okay, good, good.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck, you are hereby forced to speak first by the majority of the council.
I'm ready to pass it. This has been beat to death.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
Been beat to death?
Uh, you will need to turn your microphone on if you're going to relay that comment to our viewing audience.
Are you making a motion?
You gonna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we receive the housing element as, as it stands and approved and close public comment.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and approved to receive the housing element. Uh, is there any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. Um, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for spending a lot of time doing this. Uh, so really, um, uh, you know, it is the work of the Planning Commission and the staff and I think we're ready to make it to be a closed subject, I hope.
In about 15 seconds, if there's no further comment. Okay, can we go ahead and vote, please? And that passes 4-0 with 1 absent. Okay, our next item will be item 4, the City of Lompoke 2010 Genuine, General Plan Annual Report Progress Status of Implementation of General Plan Policies. Don't say that three times fast. And again, our Planning Division Manager, Lucille Breeze.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Uh, this is, as the mayor indicated, an annual report that is compiled regarding the status of the implementation of the general plan policies for the existing general plan. And we are recommending that the city council accept the plan and direct the Community Development Department to file the report with the Office of Planning and Research and the Department of Housing and Community Development as required by the, uh, state statute. The Planning Commission has reviewed this report and recommends this action. And that completes my staff report and I'm available for any questions.
Any council member have a question regarding to this item? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll ask for public comment on this item. Is there anyone would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment and bring this back to the council for additional discussion. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Lingle.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question for Ms. Breeze. Ms. Breeze, in the report, the land use element portion of it, um, in Appendix A, can you go to that? Uh, because I want to make reference to it. It appears several times. You got that? Okay.
I just, please, thank you.
In the third item, land use, number 3, and it, the same thing appears several times. There's a general, there's a comment that says, uh, general plan update, the requirement is imposed on new development through the development, development new review process. And this appears several times throughout that. Would you just briefly explain what that means?
Yes, thank you. What, uh, occurs is there are implementation measures in the document that require the update of the zoning ordinance. Since we have not yet updated the zoning ordinance, what we do is take this general plan policy and when a new project comes in, because it has to be consistent with our general plan, we do impose conditions to meet these implementation measures as part of the development review.
So when the general plan is brought back and changed, will that policy change then, possibly?
Uh, there is some change to the policy language, but generally, the, depending on which policies are here, uh, many of them have gone forward in that it was part of the public review process for the land use element.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing no one's light on, would someone like to advance a motion? Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the 2010 General Plan Annual Report, um, and direct staff, uh, direct the Community Development Department to file the report with the Office of Planning and Research.
Councilmember Martner?
So I move.
Second? Yeah. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the staff recommendation. Is there any further discussion? I did public comment. Nobody want, oh yeah, nobody wanted to talk about it. Any other council discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 4-0 with 1 absent. Okay, item 5 is a $125,000 housing set aside loan and a $75,000 CAL F, H, HFA Help 2 loan to the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara, H A C S B, for the addition of an elevator at the Parkside Garden Apartments located at 240 North Pine Avenue, APN number And we have our redevelopment program coordinator, Lynda Wortman, here.
Thank you, our honorable chair and board members. Staff is here tonight to request the agency board approve a $200,000, approve $200,000 in funding to the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara for the addition of an elevator to the Housing Authority's Parkside Garden Project Apartments. The Parkside Garden Apartments were constructed in 1987 and acquired by the Housing Authority in 2005. The complex is situated on a 1.78 acre site and consists of six buildings connected with exterior walkways which surround the center common area. The two-story apartment complex consists of 48 units and is located at 240 West Pine Street. The apartment complex provides affordable housing to seniors and persons with disabilities. The addition of an elevator at this development would better serve this population and accommodate existing and future residents on the second floor. The elevator will create a more accessible living environment for seniors and handicapped individuals with mobility issues within our community. The proposed funding will utilize two separate funding sources. Redevelopment set aside funding, which will provide a construction loan of $125,000 at 0% interest for a 30-year term. The loan will be deferred for a period of 10 years and then fully amortized by monthly payments for the remaining 20 years. Additionally, we propose a CHAFA Help 2 loan, which will provide a construction loan of $75,000 at 3% interest for a 24-month term, which will be amortized within, with monthly payments. If approved, the loan will be executed next week in order to, uh, meet scheduling for the 70, $75,000 CHAFA Help Loan repayment, uh, which will need to occur by April 1st, 2013, which will meet the agency's repayment schedule of the $750,000 CHAFA Help Loan to the state. By utilizing these funds, the project will assist the agency in achieving its CHAFA Help production goals by restricting 23 low-income units, which leaves a balance of only 21 very low-income units to be assisted with the CHAFA funds by the repayment date. Staff recommends the board approve a housing set aside loan in the amount of $125,000 and a $75,000 CHAFA Help Loan totaling, yeah, totaling $200,000 to assist the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara's Parkside Garden Apartments. If approved, then authorize the executive director or her designee to execute all documents required to implement this loan. This concludes my report. I'm available for questions and the Housing Authority representatives are also here if you have project questions. Thank you.
Um, you, in a passing conversation, you mentioned how we happily had these funds repaid to us and I wonder if you would share that with the rest of the council?
In this fiscal year, we have actually received almost a half a million in additional housing funds, uh, returned back to the agency, which we're not, uh, uh, actually do. We received $285,000, uh, from the Crown Laurel Project from the JM Development, uh, Company, in addition to $250,000 from Home Based on G, which was not scheduled to be repaid for an additional 15 years.
So therefore, we're finding some new- So therefore, we're finding some new projects to reuse the money?
Yes, we are, and we need to, to spend out the money to meet our excess surplus condition.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Just a quick question. You talked about CHAFA, we have a loan for $750,000 through them?
Correct.
When does that due?
April of 2013.
So we have everything in place to repay all that, then?
Yes.
We will.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if this question will be for Ms. Wortman or possibly the owners, but how many units are on the second floor of this two-story building?
I don't have that information. I have the bedroom count, but not the unit count for upstairs and downstairs.
Okay, don't wait till we come, bring the developer up or the owner.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, and we'll open this to public comment. Who would like to speak on this? Housing Authority folks, would you like to say a couple of words?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and I guess Mr. Chair and members of the redevelopment agency board as well. Before I start, I would like to point out, unless, and I do apologize if it was stated before I got here, your mayor actually represented the City of Lompoc and its redevelopment agency very well last Friday at a press conference that had been called in the city of Galita. He drove down there in the pouring rain and, and indeed represented Lompoc interests with regard to redevelopment very, very well. The Parkside Garden Apartments, as was previously stated, was acquired by the Housing Authority in 2005. Now, the part of the funding, and part of the funding actually that remains in the property, and it was acquired by the Housing Authority, by the way, is under a state, it's called the RHCP, which is Rental Housing Construction Program. And so there, there were a portion of the units that were restricted to low income under that program. When we acquired, of course, we opened up all 48 units to folks, seniors and persons with disabilities that are low and, and very low income. And further, we've, we've accepted Section 8 and have even just recently received approval to project base, Section 8, to some of the units, virtually enabling all 48 units to have deeper income targeting. The unit mix is 38 one-bedrooms and 10 two-bedrooms, and if I was counting correctly, there are 18 of the 48 units that will be served by this elevator. The reason it's not exactly half is that some of the units are single-story, and then there is a, a two-story portion. One of our longer waiting lists, however, since we acquired the property, has been for seniors up on the second floor who age in place and have some mobility challenges, particularly when carrying groceries and, and things, to look for a first-floor unit. So actually, we have not been able to house any new folks on the first floor for quite some time, because it's always been relocating folks from the second floor down to the first floor. So I do appreciate very much your, your consideration of this important opportunity. My understanding is, back in 1987, there was proposed to have been an elevator on the site, but there were some funding shortfalls, and the elevator went by the wayside. There is a small shaft there, for those of you who are familiar with the development site. Unfortunately, it no longer meets standards. So part of the cost is, is actually, we have some engineering, about $72,000 already in, in pre-development engineering architectural costs, because a new shaft will need to be created, and then, of course, the elevator. And, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Our executive director, Fred Lamont, is also here to, to answer any questions. Thank you.
Does a council member have a question for them? Councilmember Lingle?
Yes, thank you. The $72,000 already spent on this, will the $200,000 that you're requesting now, will that $72,000, is that part of the $200,000?
That is a very good question, and the answer is no.
Okay, thank you.
The, the Housing Authority, through operating funding, was able to come up with a pre-development.
Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I understand that we need to spend the money and put the elevator in, but I just kind of wonder sometime at the logic in this, that we're talking about $11,000 per unit to put an elevator in, when I just kind of wonder, wouldn't it be easier to put people that can walk upstairs in those units for $11,000 bucks a unit?
Well, and that's exactly what we've been doing. Well, the prior owners since 1987, and us since 2005. The issue is, it, it kind of hints on the ADA and, and other type issues, is that we have a certain number of units that are completely inaccessible to folks who have mobility, disabilities, or to seniors who are aging. And what we're really concerned about is, there are some seniors who really love second-floor living, and they struggle to take groceries and, and the like up the stairs, but they refuse to move to the, to the first level. And so it, it, it would, it just helps to serve for the life of the, the project, which we intend will be many, many years, serving individuals.
Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, let me ask you this, then. I mean, you're basically making the second-floor ADA compliant, right?
That is correct. It, it will be accessible. There still would be some issues with some of the units with regard to larger wheelchairs and, and the like, but the small scooters, that has become very, very popular with seniors, actually will be accommodated on the second floor.
So my question to you for your organization, the fact that you're making this structure, this apartment building ADA compliant, there must be some benefit or some, you know, what I'm trying to understand is why you're doing it, okay? Really, why are you doing it? Are you doing it because you're trying to build a, you know, a location that is going to be ADA compliant? Is that a requirement within your organization, or?
I very much appreciate the question. It, it really comes down to trying to serve the needs of the lower-income seniors and, and persons with disabilities. More and more of the lower-income folks who have fewer options are living there now, and so it really comes down, there is no absolute requirement. It certainly is in our, our Housing Authority policy to do it whenever and wherever we can. In this particular case, there were a number of deferred maintenance items, and let me just, just really quickly run through the, the work that we've done. We actually did have to do a roof replacement, and that cost a little bit over $84,000. This is all since 2005, when we acquired it. We also resurfaced the parking lot for about $8,500. We replaced all water heaters at a cost of about $33,000. There were some major decking repairs that were done for $42,000. And then we were able to, to find $72,000 to do this, this pre-development work. Where we struggled was that, that chunk, that $200,000, because, of course, you need to do the shaft, and then it doesn't make any sense at all not to have the elevator and the shaft. So to answer Councilmember Lingle's question earlier, the $200,000 is really just strictly for the elevator and the accompanying construction required to put it in. But it really is to try to serve the needs, is the bottom line.
And I think the other thing that, to remember here, these are loans that are fully repaid to the city. This is not a grant, it's a loan with interest. And the other thing is that it's going to help us meet our housing number, go ahead, chime in back there. Production, there we go. So, you know, there's a benefit to us, and the money will come back to us again, and we'll loan it out again to someone else.
Yes, and we have provided to Lynda and, and her staff the 15-year stabilized cash flow, showing that particularly with the introduction of the project base Section 8, we will have the funding both to repay the CALHFA Help within the two-year period, and then ultimately the housing set-aside loan as well.
Councilmember Starbuck, you started to, you're good? Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this?
George Bedford. Just a procedural question. It used to be the, you folks are making a decision based on the redevelopment agency, correct? Or is this just a city project?
We actually have a redevelopment and a, there's two different segments of this.
Is the city loaning the $175,000, or is the redevelopment agency loaning it?
The redevelopment agency is loaning the money.
Okay, and this project has now moved into redevelopment agency's purview?
Yes, and the money that we're loaning is money that we just got back from other projects that paid out ahead of time.
Well, it used to be that the city council used to have to adjourn for a second and then come back in as the redevelopment agency. You guys have fixed that evidently and passed it.
I would have to defer to the city attorney.
It was changed so that every meeting is, in essence, a joint meeting of both the council.
Okay, that's, it was just confusing me a little bit, because I said city slash RDA, and I'm wondering where the money's coming from, if it's the RDA fund. 0% loans, are those pretty common nowadays from the RDA?
For low, for low-modern income housing projects, they are.
Okay, so if I needed to refurbish something, I wouldn't qualify for that, is it?
If you're low-modern income, you would.
Oh, okay. So that would be the criteria, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this subject? Seeing no one rise, we'll return this to council for discussion. Is there any other question from council members for staff or the Housing Authority or? Okay, would someone care to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the $125,000 set-aside loan and the $75,000 CHAFA, CALF, CHAFA, I got it, Help II loan to the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara for the addition of an elevator at Parkside Garden Apartments located at 240 West Pine Avenue.
Hand a second, please.
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any further discussion from the council or any questions? Seeing none, could we vote, please? That passes four, zero, with one absent.